Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Special Finance Committee meeting on July 21. Alderman are present except for Alderman Heisler, and he is excused, and Alderman Schmidt is excused. Also, the mayor is in attendance, who's an ex-official member of this committee. Want to remind everyone first that if you have not signed in, please sign in, so we have a record of who attended.
Alderman Hall.
Oh, she's not on the committee. Also, to remind everyone, in case of a fire, you can leave this building and go across the street and gather in front of the St. Clair County sign. In case of a tornado or storm warning, you can go outside these doors, follow the signs, and go down into the basement. But as we inform you of any of that information that we could have placed, we will do as hard as we can as we leave these council chambers. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on the sales tax. And before we do that, just a couple reminders. One is if you will please, when you go to the microphone, you speak clearly, state your name, and then also state your address. Also, this hearing is strictly for sales tax. No other item should be talked about in this particular meeting. This is not a public hearing, and everything is just sales tax. Before we start the public hearing, I'm going to ask the mayor and Jamie to make any opening comments that will set the stage for any questions or comments that are coming forward.
Thank you, Alderman Sibley. On, I guess it was, yeah, I'm sorry. On 2011, we passed the ordinance that brought the quarter percent sales tax into effect to replace the wheel tax. I'm just going to give you, for some of you, just a real brief overview of a few of the timelines. Everybody knows that in September 2008, the stock market plunged, plummeted badly. And the city knew that there was going to be repercussions. We knew, we've known for some time that the state of Illinois has been labeled as factual, very troubled with its financial woes. We didn't see it until probably 2009, end of '09, when they readjusted the first time, and we got warning from the Illinois Municipal League, which is the organization that works with cities and mayors and city councils. And they notified us that they were reformulating the sales tax formula, well, income tax. I said sales tax, income tax, apologize, income tax. And when they did that, the city of Belleville, what we had planned to receive that year, saw a $751,000 loss of revenue. That's when the wheel tax was brought back into light. And part of the reason the wheel tax was considered at that time was because to do a sales tax increase, which was the other alternative we spoke of then, you have to make those decisions as the city council and notify Springfield. There's only two times a year you can do that. It's on April 1st and on October 1st. So you have to have your city ordinances passed and to the state, and then it would either go into effect January 1st or July 1st. But then keep in mind, usually they're running a little behind, so by the time you get your money, it's always a three-month back, back end. So knowing that it would be nine months that we'd have no additional revenue when we'd got this, this cut, plus the economy was starting to plummet, at that time, we chose to enact the wheel tax. It obviously was met with great resistance. And after a two-year period, we informed several committees, we had many hearings, we decided to abolish the wheel tax and do the quarter percent sales tax. I had felt all along personally, in my staff, that that was the more fair tax, because whether you lived in Belleville, or you lived outside Belleville, or you lived as a visitor coming through Belleville, if you chose to go to the stores to make a purchase, everyone paid the quarter percent sales tax. Now, let me make something clear right away, so we don't confuse this tonight. This quarter percent sales tax does not apply to groceries, medicine, and cars. So we have not ill-affected anyone who has prescription drugs, going to the grocery stores if people are having a hardship and living on a tight budget, like many people are, or if you choose to buy a vehicle, which is a big-ticket item, this quarter percent sales tax does not apply. So it's far all the other stuff. If you eat out at a restaurant, it applies. If you go to the local Walmart, or Target, or Lowe's, or Home Depot, it applies. Not to groceries, not to medicine, not to vehicles. So I want to make that clear. We have experienced, as stated, the quarter percent sales tax has delivered right around $1.2 million of revenue for the city of Belleville. That's what it did real close to that the first year, and we have to believe it's on track for that this year. We have explained in great detail, and I won't go through the whole thing. Alderman Hayden sent me on Thursday, I received a number of pages of questions. Some of them were talked about in this morning's newspaper article in the Belleville Democrat. The one thing I think that the article, at least in my reading, and I read it early and maybe kind of fast, but I don't think it covered, one thing we have accomplished in the last two years that we had to accomplish is we have managed to pay back our cash reserves, back to the tune of about $3 million. We had used up all of our cash reserves during this, during this severe recession. And also, we explained, and I don't know if the newspaper in this article covered it, I sometimes basically run together, at the worst of the height, at the height of the turn in the economy, at one point, the state was behind 1.7 million in paying us the income tax. It usually averaged between $1,200,000 to $1,500,000. Right now, we're down to about $650,000. It has improved. That's also why we've been able to pay more of our reserves back. Also, keep in mind, our auditors and our bond rating people have both told us that we had to get our cash reserves backed up in case we were facing a disaster. And thank goodness, our cash reserves were about $3 million when the bottom fell out of the economy, or we would have been operating in the red and had to borrow money. We, we managed to survive it, but we know that we've got to get cash reserves back up for that unexpected, and heaven forbid, we could have an unexpected natural disaster, which could be bad. So we have, we have returned the cash reserves back up to about $3 million, and this, this 1.2 million in sales tax has helped us. We also explained, and Alderman Hayden had asked for, and we showed it here, right after the economy dipped badly, or even slightly before that, we started, we, through attrition or layoffs, mostly attrition, we eliminated 30 jobs. So we have tightened our belt, and we eliminated five jobs in the street department, and five jobs in the sanitation department, and, and I will tell you, none of them have any less duties. They just have tightened. One of the reasons we could do this in the sanitation department is because we have been working towards automated trucks, and we added two more since this time. And that has greatly helped us reduce working, workman's comp injuries lifting all those cans personally, and it's helped us be able to lessen the workforce. We have nine unions in the city of Belleville, working for the city of Belleville. The unions, almost all during this tough time, took a zero, one or two contracts in a row to work with the city. And I want you to know that, because our, our employees have been very loyal in helping us work through this deficit in these tough times. We did, the city council did hire back a couple of positions, but it was things that we talked about, that we all agreed on virtually, almost all. A GIS coordinator, which is going to start August 26th here in the city for the first time, and part-time GIS, part-time land use planner in economic development, a, help me out, what was the government? Oh, marketing. We all agreed that we wanted a new monitor website, which is going to take much more attention to keep it up. You can't have it, spend that money and then not maintain it. We're working towards, and we're going to have a motion here tonight. The only other thing on tonight's finance agenda is to talk about, explain the equipment cost to televise our meetings from Lindenwood University, because they're starting a radio and television program in August at the university. And, oh, well, and the position we hired in wastewater is out of the, is out of the wastewater treatment sewer fund, so that's not even the general fund. Those are the main ones that we've hired. There might be something, but, but it's been very limited. We thought maybe maximum four people total. So we, we're 25 to 26 less employees since we first initiated the wheel tax. So I'm worried by, we have tightened our belt, we have made cuts, and, and we, and if you saw in the paper, I don't know, once again, Jamie, you've done a number of other things. Do you want to talk about a couple of the other cost-saving things that we did implement?
Right. I don't know if we have enough time to go into all of them, but, you know, some of the high points, we've done a lot of work with our energy companies and our energy costs to reduce energy costs. We've reduced our electricity and street lighting costs by over $200,000 per year since the market crashed. We've also, you know, changed uniform companies, which reduced costs $10,000 a year. We've done copy machine providers change that saved us about $30,000 a year. Telephones, switching those companies saved us about $70,000 a year. So, you know, while some say we haven't cut anything, we have been trying to make cuts where reasonable and where it didn't sink in and really hurt the city services provided.
We were one of the, we were one of the few cities that did not cut any police or fire service during the recession. Many cities around here did have to cut police and fire department services. You read about some of them for the media. We actually hired four firemen because we received a safer grant, and as you might recall, we had made the decision probably right before the bottom, right about the time the bottom had fallen out of it, we were already into a contract, to build Firehouse Number Four down here in South Illinois, Route 15. But that was much needed, because people who lived in the archers and on the south side in many directions were as much as anywhere from 12 to 15 minutes for a firetruck. That was entirely too long. And, and because we had grown over the years, we needed that firehouse, and we provided it, and it's been a good thing. But we did hire, so we actually hired four firemen during the recession, but we did get a safer grant, and, and that's about to wind up this year. We've recently applied for a cops grant. This will give us a chance to hire four police officers. There's been much talk in the past election process about hiring police. I've said it all along. I'm the first one that would love to hire police, but we've got to make sure we can pay them when we give them. I don't want to hire them just to turn around and lay them off. If we maintain this quarter percent sales tax, we feel very confident, this finance department in my office, we feel very confident that we can afford, if we're awarded, the four cops that we would get from the cops grant. If we don't get the grant, we feel that we can hire two to three immediately anyway, because of the thing, the belt tightening and the things that we've done. The other thing that Jamie did mention is, we have refinanced a number of our bonds since the recession, took advantage of the lower interest, and on the one bond alone, we save, we're going to save over the 12 years about a million?
Yeah.
Little over a million dollars for the taxpayers. So we have been very fiscally responsible, trying to watch out for all of our dollars. And I just wanted you to know that, because those might be questions on your mind. We'll take questions, and I know you have questions and comments, but I just want you to know that there was conversation about the cops grant. We would have to extend this tax a minimum of four years. Understand, if we pass this, and we're not passing a new tax, this would be to continue the quarter percent sales tax that started two years ago here. The city is always, always eligible, allowed, and capable at any time, if we would get to the point where we financially were really turning things around even further, this tax could be dropped. But it would have to be a minimum of four years if we did not want to pay the, pay, reimburse the grant, which is approximately $500,000. A police officer costs $85,000 the first year for a new officer. That's for salary, benefits, training, equipment, et cetera. It comes to right at $85,000. So you could do the math there very simple. Well, I forgot anything that you think are high points? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I thought that that might help some of the people here with some, some explanation.
Okay, we'll now open it for public opinion. Just a reminder, this is on the sales tax, and remember, we're here for a public hearing, and we act civilly. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Rick Brown, 25, UCLA, Chicago, Illinois, but I've got a lot of property in this town. I spend a lot of money in this town. You know, we went through quite a list, Mayor, of all the great stuff you've done, and how much money you've saved, but you never liked a tax, you never, you never, there wasn't a tax you didn't like. And, you know, there's a chart sitting right over here. This is going to be one of the highest sales taxes in the county. You know, there's just so much that this population in Belleville can take. You spend, you spend, you spend, you give money away to your buddies for, on their businesses. Our roads are horrible. You don't spend it in the right places. You talk about the unions, let's talk about the unions. You know, every contract that you give out for street, road repair, sidewalk, everything, now, got to be a union guy to do it. Why? Because they charge four times as much as anybody else. You get their boat, you buy their boat with our money. You know, all over this city, there's, there's, we don't have a pool. And then you hold up the police and the firemen, well, we're going to have to get rid of these guys, you know, and to make things work. And, you know, you, you need more police? You've got police. You've got about a dozen officers that write tickets to people for having company. Why don't you get them out and go and after real criminals, instead of arresting the population that gives you their tax money? It's not going to end. I mean, you have got the East St. Louis Book of Instruction on taxes. They raised taxes there to the point that everybody left. And our population has dropped by $1,500, or 1,500 people recently. Population's going down. You know, the, the city's reputation precedes, precedes you. You know, you, people don't want to come here. You run businesses out of town. You, you make us hire certain people that are on your list to do the work, that charge 25 to 50% more than anybody else. You know, you, you send these inspector guys that you have to pay into our neighborhoods to come in our homes and count toothbrushes. You know, those are people that we don't need. You know, send the, you know, we've got a good police department, we've got a good fire department. That's where most of the money's going anyway. And, and just, you're not spending it on the right stuff, and then you want to come back and ask us for more. I'm tired of it. I really am. I think there's a lot of people out here that are tired of it. You know, don't do this. You can find a way to save a few bucks somewhere else, but, you know, don't just keep coming after us for more. You're, you're looking more like the federal government every day. We don't need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Please keep your comments for about three minutes, because we want to allow everybody to have time, because then we have another meeting right after this. Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Raker. I'm a Belleville boy. I lived in O'Fallon for 13 years, under a Republican administration most of the time. And when I came back to Belleville, I was really impressed about the response to any complaint or anything that I had. The police patrols have been great in my neighborhood. I, I do have a complaint about South Main Street, but that's just me. But regarding the sales tax, this is the age-old debate over taxes versus revenue. And for me, my point is, I think it's very strange that if you look around, that there are no national casual dining restaurants. We have no Applebee's. We have no rule of hand. We have no To Charlie. We have no Long Iron. Da-da-da-da-da-da. That's water under the dam, but there's still stuff out there that we don't have that's going to be here sooner or later, unless they're priced out of the market. We could have a Trader Joe's store instead of the Kroger spinoff that's going to be in Valer. That'll draw a lot of people. And when we talk about the necessity of the sales tax increase, remember, the, when you try to spin it so that the people from out of town are going to pay for us to come here to shop in our town, and therefore, we won't have, keep carrying it all. You've got to remember, they've got to have a reason to come here. And so if we could attract the restaurants and some of the other shopping venues that are going to go past us, the Royal King located in Waterloo and Twanty instead of coming here. Why did that happen? I'd like to know. I'd like to find out. I'd be, I'll point myself to find out, but in any event, I'm suggesting that if you actually don't enact the sales tax, it won't help you this year, it won't help you next year. But down the road, we should be able to collect more revenue with a less tax, and that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Sir, if I, if I can, we, we did fight hard for a Royal King, and, and I will tell you, we were, we were fighting hard, put it in the old Walmart building. And the reason we couldn't is because that lease is finally just now going out, and THF, the holding company of some of the same stockholders of people, had such a good rate of rent that they were locked into up until just this year with Walmart, that Royal King couldn't dare negotiate with them. They were guaranteed top dollar, and that's why everything we tried. But Royal King was very interested to be back now, working hard in that property. We've worked hard in a number, but the thing that all of you may not know, one of the biggest strikes against us with name-brand restaurants and hotels is the fact that we're not on an interstate. The first question they ask when we, and believe me, I personally tried to get Trader Joe's here. I would have given anything to get, and I'm not quitting. Our staff is not quitting. But I will tell you, the first thing they want to know is, is there an interstate that's in your city?
Can I respond?
It's up to Chairman.
I, I know that the not paying owner here an interstate has always been an issue, and I am certainly well aware, having lived in O'Fallon, that that has helped them immensely. The location, location, location. I mean, the auto company basically came to them and said, you're going to have to get on an interstate. However, my favorite smaller town, currently Waterloo, and they have an Applebee's, and they have a bigger movie theater, and they have a Royal King, and they're not anywhere near an interstate. So I don't, I don't want to use it as a crutch. I'm just trying to figure out a way, other than, you know, hard enough to fare, what is it that we can do to draw people to come in here? If you go down, if you go out to Fairview and O'Fallon on the weekend, most of the shoppers are not from Fairview and O'Fallon, they're from south of here. Wakeup, 100 miles or more. And we need to pull them in here. I'd like to pull them into our Walmart instead of O'Fallon's Walmart. And they can just as easily get off of the interstate and come up 151, as opposed to get off the interstate and come up 50. So I don't know. All I'm saying is, I'm coming down on the entrepreneur's side of taking a risk on the chance that we can pull more revenue in here and take the, the load off the back of our citizens, if we can get more people to shop here. And then, maybe an 8% rate would be enough.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman? Where are you bringing up Alderman's speech? Do you want to let the public speak?
I'm letting the public speak, Mr. Chairman.
Then we can speak afterwards.
Yes, ma'am.
Michael Hackberry, 701 Center, the lab. This is nothing but a big-money grab. Wheel tax and subsequent sales tax have collected $3.2 million. All this is to cover reduced per capita tax and delayed payments from the state. The per capita tax revenue has since returned to the pre-tax levels, and the payment deficit has been reduced to $600,000. The question of what happened to this $3.2 million won't be answered without public and Alderman attending open-budget workshops. The city's cost for hiring police officers for all four years is $1,360,000. Subtracting the possible grant funding, I calculated $330,000, brings the total to $1,030,000. By extending the sales tax by one year only, and putting the money in the bank, the city will have collected enough sales tax revenue to cover the entire cost of four officers for all four years, and have an extra $170,000 of them. Alderman should discuss extending the sunset clause by one year, but only with the promise of open-budget workshops. One final note to the Alderman. Four of the good government party Aldermen who supported the creation of this tax are no longer seated when elections are coming soon.
Jerry.
Hi, Jerry Boyer, 208 East Main Street. And I'm representing Belleville Main Street, as usual. So Belleville Main Street, we went back to all of our meeting notes, and we haven't had any complaints on the sales tax. No one seems to have had any, any business failures because of it. And Main Street's pretty vocal with their complaints, so we feel pretty confident about that. But just to make sure that we were okay, we did make some calls today. First call, though, was to Roger Wingington on the, on the very west end, and he apologized us for not being here, he had another meeting. But Roger said that he has had no significant change in business because of the sales tax. He boasts that 30% of his business comes from Missouri, and, and our sales tax is a little bit lower than theirs. a little bit lower than theirs. And he said that he is actually in favor of keeping the current sales tax and putting it towards police because he feels like that would help small business a lot more than taking the sales tax away. And he said that if anybody wants to call him, feel free, but he has another meeting. And then I talked to Ben, Beth, and John today as well. Again, they said they didn't see any significant drop in their business or any complaints about the sales tax. But they would like to see if we keep the sales tax. They'd like to see the money going toward police patrol as well because that really helps small business. Then just to make sure that I was covering the restaurants, we talked to Brian Bessie, who has two restaurants downtown. Said he's never, again, never heard a complaint that the sales tax has scared anybody away. Matter of fact, he again would like to keep the sales tax and have it go toward police patrol as well because that's what we're interested in. I would like to say that, you know, as far as the chain restaurants go, Fairview Heights has an 8.35 percent sales tax, so I'm not sure that we can use sales tax as a reason why they're not here. Mostly it's traffic numbers. I'm a traffic engineer, so. And again, we also talked, Main Street also talked to Trader Joe's, and we just don't have the traffic numbers that it takes right now to bring in something like that. So I think we do need to bring in more traffic in order to bring out our businesses. So I just wanted to say that, you know, as far as what we, who we serve in Bellevue Main Street, we don't have anybody that has a problem with keeping the sales tax. Matter of fact, people said if the sales tax goes away, nobody's even going to notice it. So if we can keep it, because they haven't had any complaints on it, and we can put it toward police officers, they were in favor of that.
Rose Wilson, 322 West Dyce Street. I'm in favor of the sales tax, but I have to say something. I'm looking around the City Hall, and I counted the people on this side of the fence, and there's maybe fifty people here. The population of Bellevue is, the last time I checked, a little bit more than forty-four thousand, wouldn't you say? If this was such a big issue for the population of Bellevue, I have been here where City Hall was packed, outside was packed, and there were standing in the street. If people really missed that quarter of a cent, I think it's 25 cents per $100, why are they not here today? So it's, I'm on a very fixed income, but I understand economics, and we want police officers in this day and time. Nothing comes without a sacrifice. We all have to get the money. We want all of the services, but we have to realize that we have to pay for those services. So I'm saying, there's fifty people here, where's the rest of Bellevue if this is such an unpopular tax? For the real tax, we have a lot more. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is David Asher. I live at 307 John Henry Street. And first of all, I'd like to clear something up that I didn't understand from the paper. It says this tax is on an outside special business district. Now, is there some parts of town that aren't being taxed, or what's outside special business?
Let me clarify this up.
Okay. In the city of Bellevue, we have four special business districts that are taxed at one percent higher than the rest of the city. So the majority of our city is at 8.1 percent sales tax rate within those business districts, which therefore it's Carla Green Mount where Walmart, and those is Bellevue Crossing, which is where Target and Home Depot are. Just outside of where Target is, there's a Wendy's and a Walgreens. That's a fourth district, or a third district, and then Eckert's Orchards is the fourth district. So if you shop at one of those places, you're going to pay 9.1 percent currently. Anywhere else in the city it's 8.1 percent.
That's interesting. She doesn't seem fair, but anyhow, I want to express that I'm very much against this tax. Several reasons. It's a proven fact that when you reduce taxes, revenues increase. These people that come up and say, the businesses say they haven't been hurt by this or such, how do they know? I mean, people can talk all they want. They can say all they want, but, you know, in business, a lot of customers that aren't satisfied, they don't tell you that they're not coming back. They just don't come back, or more of them don't come. It seems to be contrary to common sense to think that these people say with any authority that they weren't affected by the higher tax. Number two, we've got to look inside even deeper. You talked about the cuts. Well, up until a year or so ago, we had a swimming pool. There was a budget amount for that swimming pool. Where did that, where does that money end? Why can't that be used towards all these things that we say we need? That's just one other aspect. The other thing I want to talk about there is the TIF. We seem to be totally carried away by this TIF thing. If we need the money, why can't we start cutting back? TIF money. We got four or five TIF accounts. Take a look at the TIF accounts. Maybe we can back some of that out. Another thing, we shouldn't be in the real estate. We don't need to be buying real estate on this end of town and that end of town. The city, I didn't think this government was supposed to be in the real estate business. But those facts, stay out of the real estate business. Take a hard look at the TIF, and that's why I'm against it. I don't think that we're giving the people of this city a fair shake. The taxes just keep going up, keep going up, and people's raises aren't going up to match any of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Paul Brigham. I live at 23 North Fordham Street. I have some questions and a couple statements I'd like to make. First of all, when you put the gaming issues with the bars and things of that sort, they put it on the ballot. Why don't we do more of that? The sales tax, if people want it, put it on the ballot. So you don't have to worry about picking the line hard to credit. We did it with gaming and chance. Why didn't, or the gaming and these bars and things of that sort, why does that put on the ballot versus you making a decision?
We asked for it to be on the ballot.
Well, why not do this? It's got people's money. And I'd like to know how much money we have generated from that.
It's still very inaccurate. It's just starting to come. Many of these, only still a handful of places have received their machines. So we probably received a few thousand dollars. But until we get, establishments all get hooked up, we will have no real true picture. But this time, I think there's only about seven places, eight?
Yeah. There's a two-month lag between when we did our revenue. So we're going off of there was that many places back then.
So they're slowly starting to hook them up, but it's a slow process, and there's not that many places already that are experiencing. And then there's a lag before we would get any revenue. So it's, there's just not enough time that's gone that we can get a true picture on this. And that was one of the things that we said in some of these other finance meetings.
What about putting this on the ballot so people that you decide, can any other further tax increase?
If we would stop to put it on the ballot now, you understand, this tax technically runs out December 31st. We have to notify Springfield with an ordinance by October 1st.
Okay.
So then the tax would stop. If, I don't believe there's any election at all in November. I don't know what we have in the spring this year, so it could be up to a, I didn't check with the county clerk, but I think it could be six months to a year till you can even offer the vote. And then there's only twice a year, as I mentioned earlier, that the state will accept an ordinance to reinstate or to start sales tax or to do whatever. So we would basically be at least a year until we could get a decision made. So we would have no tax for a year.
Well, I suggest it would be extended or reduced, reduced to go back, or until it closes up, till we can have the earliest possible election, and that's when it would be decided on. And the wheel tax brought in, what, $500,000?
No.
And the sales tax brought in 1.29?
Approximately 1.29.
There was $700,000 that was raised additionally that was above the half million. Were other things cut back or are there new producing in taxes? Because it worries that much more taxes.
Things were cut back, sir, but as I explained, we have replenished $3 million into our reserves. We were actually about $1 million in the red in the reserve fund, right?
No.
No, I'm mistaken.
We had eaten through.
Eaten through all of it.
A half of the reserves.
Okay.
We built it up.
So we, yeah, we were almost down to a million. I'm sorry. We were almost down to a million left out of 3 million in the reserves. So we had taken that money that, you're talking about that difference, and we have replenished our reserve account, which our auditors, every year when they come here for our annual report, tell the consul in their executive report, you have to build your reserves up. This has not been adequate. The last couple of years, they particularly told us that because we had dug into it. It's just like now we have to go for our own bonding ratings anytime that we're going to have a renewed amount. They've told us that you have to build your reserves up if you want to keep an A-plus or go to a double A. You have to build up your reserves. That was the biggest criticism we had. So we know that what we're doing by replenishing the reserves is a must because if we have a tornado or something come in through town and we had to dip into some excessive money for whatever reason, this just wasn't there.
What about the possibility of keeping costs and putting phrases on all government employees and building balance? If we get caught up, no one else working in the private sector, several people are hurting, and we are keeping increasing spending and rates. I think that's a possibility for the sales tax or any other taxes such as that, put it on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you. Stewart, just make sure your comments are on the sales tax, please.
This is Gardiner through 18 South 29th Street, Bellevue. As the mayor was giving his most speeches at Genghis, we know it's been oppressed because it seems like that the city should have tightened its belt a long time ago, and that's just when we hit a financial bump. We should try to run this thing as lean as possible at all times to when something does happen. And spend a million dollars on what looks to be an illegal landfill, that's a total waste of taxpayer money. And the casque, the engineering, if they had, whoever done the scouting on that, I guess you'd say, done a poor job. It's turned out to be a swamp and a disaster. Anytime there's a small rainstorm, it washes out everything that you put in. And those lakes are probably no more than two foot deep. They don't need to be dredged out if you want to have a fish in there in one lake that's a genuine swamp.
Stewart, please address the sales tax.
Well, this all gets down to spending money that you, I'm against the sales tax, and if we went through all this reckless spending, we might not even need a sales tax in the first place. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
It's Ruth Grunewall, 47th 30 Walt Turner, Bellevue. I have read in the paper that you were entertaining the idea of making the sales tax permanent. It should never, ever, ever be made permanent. Maybe a year or two, but I agree with the other man about maybe putting it on the ballot, you know, and put it to a general election. I mean, who knows, maybe a year or two down the road, the gaming issue, you know, would be bringing in more revenues. That's all. Thank you.
One time. Give us a direct comment, one time. Yes, sir.
I'm Ed Summers. I live at 1111 Shale Street in Bellevue. A few comments that I'd like to make. Number one, Mr. Mayor, your comments preceding this meeting, you talked about having to extend this sales tax for a period of four years. When you enacted the sales tax, we put a sunset clause on it because of the backlash from the public about it, and you come back to the table again wanting to extend for four years. What's the stopping from coming back again four years from now and saying, oh, you needed more? You need more, you need more. Second point I'd like to make is about the businesses here. A gentleman made a comment about people really don't complain, they just don't come back or they don't go there in the first place. When I need to go to Lowe's, I go to Fairview Heights. When I need a hamburger, I go to Swanson. When I want to go to the movies, I go to Fairview Heights or O'Fallon. When I want to go out for a steak and take my wife out for dinner, I go to Shiloh, I go to O'Fallon, and I go to Fairview Heights. We just don't shop. We don't eat and bill the because of the tax. So take it from there.
George Schreiber, 27th South 10th Street. I'm a resident of Ward 5. Hi, Joe. The spending and the spending. I mean, other communities have, as you're going to see, Millia's going to show you, a much lower tax rate and a swimming pool, you know. You touched on that we've eliminated some city positions, but when I looked at the public database for our employees, in 2008, we had 355. In 2010, we had an increase of seven more that put us at 362. In 2012, we had yet another increase of 90, which put us at 453 employees. Now, 47 of those were part-time employees for the rec. department for the pool, which we do not have. I'm just really upset. I just last summer taught my granddaughter how to swim, and we have to go to Free Bird to swim. So you know when I'm there, I'm shopping there. Since this new Walmart came to town, I have not spent one penny at any Walmart nationwide. I've had it with the TIPS. A million dollars to Eckert's Orchards, they weren't going to pull their trees out and leave. They were doing so well that they were turning customers away. They didn't have a big enough restaurant. Let them build a restaurant. Don't give them a million dollars of our money to do that. These TIPS, Bellevue is not a better city today than it was 10 years ago. I think it's gotten far worse. People are selling their homes for $20,000 just to move out. The only thing you're going to fill those homes with is either you're going to demo them or it's going to be more renters. Thank you.
I just want to add to the people who are here who maybe don't have the facts. Unless you choose to shop at Walmart or Eckert's or Target, no one from the city, no TIP gives them one dime. Unless you choose to shop there. Eckert's did a $6 million reinvestment in their property, and they're paying all their own taxes. And unless you choose to shop there and they get the 1% business district for a certain number of years, not one dime of general TIF money or any money went to that development. Now, that is an absolute misconception, what you're saying. It's not true. Am I correct, Jamie? The same with Walmart and Lowe's. THF invested $110 million in that project, and over the 23 years, the most they get back from the city's TIF development agreement, and that's a combination of enterprise zone development agreement and business district, is $18 million, about $110. But if you don't shop there and spend the 1% business district tax, if they go-- if they go belly up, we don't owe them a thing. That's the agreement. We did not give any city money upfront to Walmart or Lowe's. If people don't go there and spend money, they get nothing back. And it's a fact. We're telling things that aren't true to people. Those are, these are project-driven, these specific TIPS are project-driven. Now, I will tell you this. On the Lowe's and the Walmart and on the Target, Home Depot, we're bringing in about, what, Jamie, in sales tax, right now?
That we get to keep?
That we get to keep.
Over a million.
Over a million dollars a year. Each year, we're getting back. That pays for a lot of policemen and farmen. If they would have moved that store into Shiloh a few blocks away, we wouldn't have got ten cents. Now, we had a Walmart for thirty years. It started in nineteen seventy-six. I was two years out of high school. I didn't start the Walmart. But I know that when I became mayor and Walmart decided to build a new superstore, we were getting about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, wasn't it?
It's six hundred and forty-eight.
I'm sorry, six hundred and forty-eight thousand a year. Six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year, sales tax. And what we did in that development agreement is they had to guarantee us that amount plus the additional tax that we worked out. We're getting, like I said, we're getting our money back. We kept it in Bellville without that Walmart and that Lowe's shopping center. And Eckert's, the sales have increased there. And the taxpayers, you're in my tax money. I'm in TIP Three, which is the big tax, the TIP that's got a lot of residential in it. Not one dime of TIP Three goes into Eckert's, Lowe's, or Walmart's, or to Target or Home Depot. That is a myth. But we get about a million dollars a year back on sales tax from those TIPS. And that goes into the general fund. The other thing that was said here a couple minutes ago, again, about TIPS, you have to understand, folks, we cannot take TIP money and pay salaries. It's illegal. There is a very small part that's allowed for administration, which we exercise. But we cannot co-mingle that money. That money must be used on economic development, alleviating blight, land acquisition, infrastructure, which is where we use the lion's share. That is how we're paying for the lion's share of all the road projects you see going on every year. The vast majority of it is TIP funds. So those are facts that are absolute facts. Mr. Chairman, then.
Okay.
Rebuttal. The other gentleman must give me opportunity.
Okay, for rebuttal.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. The TIP money, you live in TIP Three, therefore, the taxes that come out of your property tax, those dollars, do not fund the police, the fire, the salaries. Correct? Okay, the TIP funds, TIP funds cannot be used for salaries, et cetera.
There is a small part of them that we take out, but it's a small part. And I don't want you to, but we do use the TIP money to buy all the police cars and to buy the new fire truck.
For equipment. I understand that.
For equipment, we do. And without the TIP funds, we would have to take down the general fund.
I was quiet while you did your response to my comment, and I would like to do my rebuttal now. I think a bit of what I implied was a bit misunderstood in your response. How do I say this now? The money from those people who live within a TIP district, those taxes are funding those TIPS, and therefore, that money is not in the general fund. If I'm not in a TIP district, I'm paying for all the police, all the fire, all the salaries, because those people that are within the TIP districts are not paying for those services. When I talked about Eckert's Orchards getting that million-dollar TIP, you know, to help their business. What I'm saying is, that didn't help all of Bellville. I don't see the city being any better now than it was four years ago or eight years ago. I see it going downhill. I see people leaving in blocks. And I think TIPS are being abused. I think that that new Walmart out there, you said TIPS were to be used to cure blights, but they created blight where the old Walmart was and where they built a new store, was not blighted, it was a farm field. So I think that these TIPS need to be reined in. TIP Two needs to be expired. It'd probably be a measly fifty thousand dollars, but that's half a police officer. The TIPS need to be reined in.
Give one minute.
Don't worry about her, don't worry about her. Rick Brown, the Twenty-Five of C L A, Shiloh. The real estate tax rate in Bellville is twenty-one percent higher than Shiloh and Old Fallon. Twenty-one percent. It's what we pay. Mr. Mayor, what is the deductible on your health insurance that we provide for you?
Mr. Brown, I'm not here to be criticized by you.
I can tell you it's zero. Not one penny.
That's not true.
It is true. They got a zero deductible on their, ninety-seven percent of the employees in this city take the zero deductible.
That is true, but...
That's true. You're right. Okay, that's enough said. How many people out here have zero deductible on their health insurance? I know, I know, and I pay twenty-five hundred. We provide all this to you. And you spend our money, and it's still not enough. You know, this is what this conversation is about. You spend too much. You take too much from us.
Since we're only allowed, will the alderman be asking more than one question? I mean, I'll wait to the very end to make my most important question if I'm only going to allow him to be able to speak once.
You're part of this committee over here discussing if you have anything you want to say there in this portion of it. Otherwise, I'm going to close this portion, and we'll go into the finance committee. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Kathy. I mean...
I didn't think the public, I want to speak during a public hearing too, Mr. Chairman, but I'm going to wait until all the public is joined.
I'm Kathy Draper, and I'm at five hundred South Nineteenth Street. I'm on a very fixed income. I don't get the luxuries of everything that yous are talking about, going out to eat and everything. So the high tax really doesn't pertain to me. My question is, is last year, before everybody changed over and stuff, I talked to Jerry Turner about why isn't that my sewer bill comes three weeks after the reading? And he stated that the sewer bills get mailed to St. Louis because it's a cheaper rate than Bellville. There's a post office five blocks down the street. If it's cheaper and we're supposed to buy in Bellville, why isn't Bellville doing Bellville? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. I told them, I said, you know, you complain about my sewer bill being late all the time, okay? It takes me ten minutes to drive here from my house. It takes me three weeks to get my bill. Call me, I'll come and get it. You can save your postage. I just don't understand, if you're supposed to buy in Bellville and do Bellville, then why doesn't Bellville send the post office through in Bellville? That's what I got.
Do you know that every piece of mail that gets mailed to the city of Bellville goes through St. Louis before it gets brought back here?
No, I didn't know that, but it just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense.
You just let me know that. So if I have a process in St. Louis, and it gets sent, it gets taken to the St. Louis post office, we save four cents a piece by doing that.
I can send a card to my daughter in Kansas City, Kansas. It takes five days.
And how much do you think that...
For whatever the first-class postage is.
What, forty-six?
Forty-six or something.
A postcard costs thirty-three cents to mail. We pay twenty-four cents per piece.
But it takes three weeks to get my bill.
It does not.
It does. It does. It does.
You show me proof, and I'll be happy to call you.
I will show you.
But I know for a fact that our usage data, we got usage...
I know that there's three different, there's three different mailing dates. They've told me, according to where you live, because according to when you're red and when your bills go out. And I'm well aware of that, and that's why I asked you. I said, I'm fixed income, I get a disability check at the beginning of the month. If I get red at the end of the month, then why don't I have my bill within the first week or so? And he said, I don't know. Why? You get it the twentieth. And I said, I don't know. You mail them.
Right. One of the many things I've researched since taking office is the external billing, outsourcing the billing and mailing. And I've actually looked at it, crunched the numbers to see whether it was worth bringing back that billing and house. We would lose ten thousand dollars a month if I brought that back in-house, based on just the savings that goes to July.
Okay, but you're all saying buy Bellville. Buy Bellville.
Is the USPS a Bellville business? United States Postal Service, a Bellville business? It is high. It is a federal business. I don't see how sending it to St. Louis is any different than taking it to Bellville. And I can say four cents, when you're talking about eighteen thousand pieces of mail.
But that's what he's saying. He's spending, he's going to Lowe's in Fairview to save the money, the difference. What's the difference? From the postage.
We don't pay taxes on postage, ma'am. We don't pay taxes on postage.
Okay. We're going to kind of bring this in. Sir, you've already had your chance, we're not going to sit here and debate all night, sir. Okay, any other from the, okay, if not, Joe, you want to make your statement now? Because you're going to wait, or you want to...
I'll go, and I'll rock him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, this is Governor, my name is Jolene, I'm a alderman of Ward Five. I want to thank the citizens that have communicated with Mr. Chairman over the past several weeks that assisted me in providing various questions that were sent to the mayor on July twenty-fifth. I want to graciously thank the mayor for his response that was sent to me this past July twenty-seventh. And I have had a chance to do a short follow-up memo dated yesterday, which I'm sure with everything going on, probably not had a chance to respond. But it was a good dialogue, and I think that's what we need, Mr. Chairman, when we get into these situations. I want to thank the public also for coming out this evening. And yes, I would like to see more people here. Unfortunately, I don't think it's a situation, Mr. Chairman, as necessarily lack of concern or people are in support of keeping a tax as much as the lack of attendance at a public hearing is the same as the lack of people voting at polls and is called voter advocacy. Where the people perceive that there is nothing that they can do to change their government, which is a sad state of affairs that we need, as leaders of our community, try to change. I will now reiterate, as I promised my colleague and friend, Mr. Seiger, the questions that were asked in these various memos, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to enter them, and I'm going to give them to Jamie. And I've been into the official record of this public hearing and have, Mr. Chairman, respectfully request to give you part of the minutes of this meeting, because there's a lot of important information. And if we can, post them on the web, because I think there's a lot of questions from both sides of perspective, the public, the mayor himself, and others of all aspects as it relates to this question before us. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to state something. I am for adding more police. I ran on that campaign for mayor. We need more police. Crime is the number-one issue, and it was proven by the ballot that was Democrat when he basically surveyed fifty citizens at their home, at their door. But here is also my concern. The state of Illinois, two years ago, implemented what was called a temporary, quote-unquote, ladies and gentlemen, temporary income tax, because the state is broke. How do we know the state is broke? Because we're seeing services cut all around us. And we're not getting our money on a timely basis, which basically, ladies and gentlemen, just implemented this discussion this evening. It started out with the wheels tax and now the sales tax. Yet, the people of the state of Illinois, which includes the citizens of Bellville, if they've been following the information, know that that tax is now being discussed to be made permanent. A permanent additional income tax, which is basically a sixty-five and sixty-seven percent increase on citizens and businesses. We, as a community, have to watch what we are spending. A sensible business cannot simply spend money that they do not have without going out of business. Families out there cannot spend money that they don't have without running the risk of basically putting themselves in bankruptcy or choosing to paint their house or feed their children. Yet, the citizens of Bellville continue to see the property tax, Mr. Chairman, go up. And I'm not going to debate this tonight, but we have a multitude of TIPS, and I've proved in black and white that, based on the TIPS and the way that other entities have to raise their rates to get their levy. And I've not seen anybody from the administration show me different in writing. TIPS raise property taxes as a whole. And because of that, we have people who have property taxes going up, Mr. Chairman, while their property values are going down. Their investment is going down. That has to be a concern for us as elected officials and every citizen in this city. We have at this juncture, and we all know it, and the cat is out of the bag for most of you, but those of you who don't, ladies and gentlemen, your sewer rates will be going up in the next year. We know that. We know that, Mayor. You know that, Mr. Chairman. We can't hide it. It's a fact. And I'll tell you the truth. They have to go up because we have to pay the forty-four million for the project down at the sewer plant, another forty-four million on new pipes. We have basically around a hundred million dollar loan, ladies and gentlemen, that is I E T A demanded. And I will support the raise of the sewer rates, because we have no choice in this game, other than unless we want to face the fines that Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, which we can't afford. So now, as we're sitting here this evening, what I want the people that are going to be voting on this to think about, not only in tonight's meeting, but the final meeting before the city council, is, yes, we need to find a way to add more police, because crime is the number-one issue and is the number-one reason, I believe, people are leaving the city. And yet, with the statistic provided by the mayor's office, it shows forty-two percent, forty-two percent, basically, of the citizenry of the city of Bellville are rental. Rental.
Thirty-six percent is the last census.
I'm just going off the numbers that were given to me, and those... I'm just going, you know, we make thirty-six, forty-two, compromise cost thirty-eight. It's a lot. It's a lot, and we need it. And the fact of the matter is, as we discussed, the crime free housing shortage, and I support that. But yet, we are talking about putting a twenty-five dollar fee to that, which will be charged to the landlord, and the landlord will pass that on to the renter. That is how business is done. And it will become our, what is already known as the rent tax. Seeing? Actually, five dollars more than the wheel tax. So as we talk about the sales tax this evening, and the concept of should it be a permanent tax? Should we have it for four years, two years, three years? The one thing that I want you, Mr. Chairman, mayor, staff, respected members, and colleagues of this board of aldermen and citizens to keep in mind, the bottom line. And my concern, more than anything, when you look at the income tax based on the state, increases in our property tax, increases with the potentiality of a rent tax. Now, the increase of the sales tax. Are we, are we as a community trying our best? And every... And everybody is here, has compassion. Nobody's ever questioned your compassion. Mayor, I hope nobody questions mine. Nobody's questioned your compassion, Mr. Chairman. I hope nobody questions mine. We are all here, ladies and gentlemen, strive for the best for this city. There's no doubt about that. That's what we want. But I hope and pray that we take a strong look at everything that we're doing because the bottom line is always the bottom line of everybody. And are we, as a community, pricing ourselves out of our citizenry to be able to live here? Of people wanting to come to move here and live here, form a business here, do their business here, or have a business here? And I really do believe that we need to take a hard look at that before we make the final, final decisions, all this good. Thank you.
Excuse me. Yes, Mayor, you stated that Walmart and Mam are in a specialty, special district. If not, their tax, the tax rate would be cheaper. But what we're not realizing, every one of these stores that I went to, I went to the same ones out of the city of Belvo. But Walmart, that is where everybody, most of everybody, has to shop for their everyday needs. So they're getting stuck for paying that extra tax because that's where they have to shop. You don't go to your little specialty stores for the stuff that you would go to Walmart, which is your everyday needs. And talking about the sewer rates going up, yes, and what are we going to do? Are we gonna tax the people more for the sewer rates over on the east end because we're pumping out the sewer out into ditches because the EPA is the natterus? We have to fix that. What's that gonna cost? How much is that gonna go up? And then, are we being upfront and honest with the people? We're going to be building a park out of Firehouse Four for our piece of artifact that we got from New York. When you go into Firehouse Four, there's one road in and the same road out, which is 20 feet wide. When are we gonna tell the people, we gotta build a new road? And where's the money gonna come from for that when they put that parking out there? Because that road that is out there is the only road for the fire trucks coming in and out. So where's that money gonna come from? We're doing and not even telling the people of when that park gets built. Oh, well, we have to build the road because we got the park built. We have our 2,000,000.6 park. Yes, parks are nice, but that park has costed more and more and more. And the mayor stated our tip agreements in that, most of the people don't get anything unless they do the business. How much money did we lose with the Wagner tip agreement? There is money that could have been back in the general fund. I think the most important thing about this is, are we managing our money properly? So I just, I am sorry, I think we all need to take a hard look at this because right there it proves, those people with other stores in other cities, they're thriving, and their tax rate for where the people have to shop for their everyday needs is cheaper than us. That's all I have to say until city council meeting. Oh, one more thing, if I may, please. The unions. Laugh. Um, is that funny?
I'm laughing about what you're asking. Who laughed? Nobody could laugh?
Was it?
Go ahead.
All right, our unions. When they write the contracts, how many of our unions, on every one of the contracts has been wrote, in there is, after so many years, they want to move out of the city of Belvo? That's our police, fire, not only bring it down on police and fire. Any other union, the contracts we've been writing lately, they're asking, after so many years, that they get to move out of the city of Belvo. Now, what does that tell us? Our employees don't even wanna stay here.
That's a wrong assumption. You don't know that.
Well, why are they asking for it in the contract?
You have to ask them. But at the same time, you're making an assumption that that's the reason they're moving out.
Well, and what the assumption is...
That's not a correct assumption. It could be, but you can't say that that's the only reason that they're moving out is because of that in the contract. That's not an assumption that's right. Okay, any other aldermen that wanna talk in the public hearing? If not, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. We wanna thank all the members of the public who came and express your viewpoints. That's the nice thing about hearings and the democracy that we have is the fact that you can express your opinions, and we appreciate that. So, thank you very much for coming. We'll now move into the special finance committee meeting. Okay, we're gonna take about five minute recess.
You don't get to break the other one yet. How are you? Pretty mild.
Okay, thank you. Let's, next portion of this meeting, if anyone in the public have anything to say on the next item, which is the purchase of equipment. I won't say any of that, but I will not say anything more. We've had enough of the sales tax. Everybody's had their opportunity. So this would just be if you had anything else to say on the other agenda item. Does anyone have anything to say on that, Mr. Edgar?
Just I know the price of $16,000, but I didn't notice that this was a bid response. Did this go out for bid?
Okay, no other comments? Okay, we'll go now to the purchase of equipment for televising council meetings. Everyone should have received a copy of that in their packet.
Okay, I know this has been discussed various times in this committee and on the city council floor. We do per charter agreement have the opportunity for, to get a grant of $6,000 from Charter to start televising our council meetings and any other meetings that we wanna televise. What we did right away is we started talking to Lindenwood about the possibility of them participating as well to try and keep down our costs. After many months of discussion, they're finally ready to open their communication center where they will have, I think, a radio and TV station on their campus, where they will help broadcast meetings, any other functions that we'd wanna broadcast on Charter, as well as stream them live on the internet, and they'll be available to stream on our website as well. The only parts of the expense that obviously would fall on us, besides the current staff time, no additional staff, but current staff time, would be the installation of the equipment in these council chambers. So what happened was Lindenwood and Charter and the city IT staff came to the table and all discussed what the needs were to go along with their equipment. Obviously, Lindenwood, everything has to be compatible. As well as Charter, obviously, everything has to be compatible and up to their standards so they can stream it. This company was brought to us by Charter and Lindenwood. This was not something we went out to get a quote on. This was who they use most of the time when they're working on this type of project, and that they know their, they do a good job, and their equipment is compatible with their needs. So they brought this quote to us and said to, they've done many walkthroughs of city hall and these council chambers to look at everything. They're telling us that they can get everything set up and ready to go for the $16,637. So again, we did not bid this out because, again, it was brought to us by Lindenwood and Charter telling us this is exactly what we need. We know these people, they work with us on numerous other occasions, and they'll do a great job. So the total cost of the equipment, as you can see, $16,637. Of that, we would get $6,000 back from Charter. So the cost of the city is just over $10,000. Now, per the Charter franchise agreement, we'd have to spend at least $6,000 to get them to match. So the equipment would have had to cost $12,000 to at least get their $6,000 match. Obviously, this is more than that. We'd be putting in about $10,000.
Rich had a number of meetings with Charter and with Lindenwood, and he also made some other calls and some inquiries to other companies. And he was convinced also of what he told me in my office, that he firmly recommended that they've had success with this particular, everything's compatible, which is the term you heard from Jamie, but same thing he told me, and he felt that it would be very much in our best interest to go with what we know, what they know works. And so that's why we're here tonight, because if we wanna get this up and running, we need to have this on the council agenda Monday night so that we could still, could still be gotten the equipment and installed for their kickoff that they're projecting.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman, about the yield and the numbers. Thank you, sir. My question might as do with, is this equipment, is it all going to be located on mobiles?
And? It's, I think, honestly, I've heard it a couple different ways. Rich Peppers has indicated that he wants to be a part of helping here get it off the ground, running. They're gonna use interns, I understand, in the future as their program gets going. I think some of them are fixed, some of them are gonna be mobile. So I don't know if I totally answered...
In terms of the equipment itself?
Yes. It's a mixture.
I think, I think the majority of this, maybe not all of it, the majority, will be attached here in the council chambers. But Lindenwood will provide all other mobile equipment for if we want to film.
200 anniversary, or they do a documentary at the Firehouse on safety or whatever. So they're hoping to do a number of other educational pieces other than whatever meetings we want. And part of the agreement had to be that we had to provide a staff person to work with their youngsters that are gonna be here on site with the filming, and we also had to provide a person in the programming. And that's where Sheriff Stratsbaugh, who's working on the marketing and the website and all that, she's been assigned to them because they don't wanna make program decisions for the city. And so she's already been out there meeting with them numerous times, starting to coordinate all the different things that this, because this has got a lot of potential.
I guess part of my concern really has to be with the shape that the council chambers is in, and the issues that we have at times where we have rain, and we have, you know, places where people can't even sit down, and I don't know if we've got anything about the roof, this roof issue.
The roof, let me tell you, give me an update. Kenny Vaughn and I have talked, he is getting, he's getting some estimates on, it's a condensation problem in the heating and cooling vents, the ductwork is what he believes is the problem. And it makes sense, we really only have the problem primarily when we have air conditioning system, and you're real bad at humidity. He's getting estimates. I don't know what we're gonna get into, but I assume, but what they're talking about is the back wall. There's actually upstairs, if they were to go up, there's on the second floor, there's some detective rooms right behind there. They're looking at accessing that or some fixed up. Don't hold me to this, but they've looked at this. So I think all the cameras they're really looking at, a lot of it, is from the back wall, and then it could be a mobile one up closer or whatever. I don't believe the ceiling's involved, but we are getting estimates to work on the ceiling situation because it's been driven for years, it's getting worse, condensation's coming through, and I don't know if those are asbestos tile or what we're gonna have to do, but I assume it's gonna have to be something we have to budget next year. Okay? But he's getting answers on that.
It'd be my concern if we're locating the equipment.
No, it's not. I can tell you, there's been no discussion about in the ceiling.
No, and I know when Rich and the IT people walk them through, they may note of all of that, so I know they want to put it somewhere where it's worth the damage.
Good point. In the public place, where's the money coming from?
This is general one.
It was budgeted.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited about this. I think this is gonna be an asset to promote, open this in transparency, Mr. Chairman, as it relates to the bidding, and most people know that I'm strong on open bids, multiple bids, but this is indeed a specialty type situation. I've been in this situation with another community that went through some of the similar situations and wanted to do open bid on every single aspect instead of working with the recommended company, which was Charter's predecessor. And what we ended up having with certain things was, you know, certain things were not compatible, and we ended up spending more money in Holland than in Lindenwood. So if this, if the experts that we're gonna be working with, with Lindenwood and Charter are saying we need, then I think this $10,637 minus the $6,000 from Charter is gonna be a great investment amount, the members support this. Thank you.
Alderman, start it.
Yes, you said that this is in the budget. This is, I'm quite sure I'm not the only one. We all have a hard time finding things like this because they're not always listed exactly in the budget, what things are, like dumpster enclosure net. I could not find it. Maybe it's in there, I'm not saying it's not. But I would like to ask for our next question, that is more easily read and understandable for the people that are accountants, so...
Actually, I think it was two years ago, Dean asked for that same thing, a list of capital projects, because that was probably the most questions you guys received, is Alderman, what roads are getting fixed, what sidewalks? So for the past couple of years, I have provided lists with a breakdown of all capital expenditures. This video equipment was on there, the dumpster enclosure was on there, all street projects were on there.
You have the street project on there about out of Firehouse Four, because they're not gonna be able to use that same road then.
If it wasn't budgeted, it's not on there.
And Lillian, I would suggest that you go to the 9/11 committee and express your concern and start with that. Because that topic is not, it brought to my attention, I don't think they're gonna see 100,000 cars in there to visit that. And if the fire chief had concerns, I guarantee you, his A number one concern would be about those fire trucks, and that has yet to be a discussion point. So I would suggest you talk to the fire chief when he gets back from vacation and/or the 9/11 committee and start with them, and see if they, maybe they haven't just thought about it. Maybe you, but I have not heard that at all. That's not a concern.
Amy.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a question about the ongoing costs. What do we expect in the future? Once you put in this installation, do we budget a couple thousand dollars for maintenance? Or are we looking at something like that, ongoing?
We, I think originally, it came before the finance committee, probably a year or so ago now, the Charter offered that you could, you know, they would tack on a small, you know, two cent per customer per monthly or something. I don't count me on the two cents. And the council or the finance committee and the council said, no, we don't wanna tack on that extra fee, which would have went towards maintenance and the ongoing expenses. So essentially, we're not gonna be getting any additional revenue for that. What we'll have to do is budget the maintenance.
And then, quite honestly, Alderman Davidson, until we experience a year, we really are not gonna have a clear, you can tell us what our cities have, but until we see exactly what we run into, we won't know. We don't anticipate big maintenance costs, according to Charter, other cities they have dealt with, if not, but they did offer that situation where you could have tacked on a couple cents, and at the time, the council said no, and we just have to understand that we'll have to find that. And we are investigating further. Rich Peppers is working with them to see what numbers we might wanna budget for next year.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, yes. There is in the contract, there is in the contract a maintenance clause... a maintenance clause. Again, I can't remember if it's two cents or ten cents or whatever. You know, the concerns, from my recollection, before the finance committee at the time was that we could implement that. The concern was if we do implement that, will they pass that cost on to the consumer? You know, now it's so that would be taxable income on them because they can't charge it as a tax. We're at a maximum tax. But the bigger concern, I believe you're correct, Mayor, was we really didn't want to do anything until we ran here to see exactly what, we think we have enough, obviously, within our budget to come to the initial maintenance to see what we're going to need to maintain this.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we saying that we don't know what the projected lifespan of the equipment is?
Yeah, Rich has got a projected lifespan. I mean, I did ask him to make him come tonight. I should have--
I mean, with this type of equipment, you'd like to believe it's probably going to last five, seven years, but it's technology, you know, technology.
There's been no recommendation from the company here, is it MC Inc.?
Modern Communications.
Modern Communications about upgrades that might be necessary in the future or anything like that?
Nothing that would be, like, all we're going to do is say probably, you know, every couple of years, maybe a thousand dollars or so.
Would those upgrades possibly be more determined by Charter and changes in how, you know, they're operating?
Them and Lindenwood.
Them and Lindenwood. And then I think the other thing, Alderman, that we agreed that we would have to look at, if we're just looking at basically only using it for our city council meetings, I think, you know, we're talking very basic service and it should be pretty minimal as far as ongoing costs.
Well, I would think, excuse me, Mayor, but I would think that any occasion where we might be asking for a public hearing to take place--
Certainly. And that's what we're saying. We're saying that there's, Lindenwood's saying they would gladly video and stream the zoning board meetings, other committee meetings, that possibly. They're even saying that there's other events that they would love to broadcast. It might be, like you said, stuff pertaining to the 200th anniversary. It might be, it might be some of our festivals. It might be, you know--
Would there be two-way communication? Would the public be able to enter a question or participate through the medium and public participation?
We're going after the educational, you mean like far as asking questions over there? There could, I mean, it's not to say that there could be some--
Moderation.
Moderation, question, there could be some educational programming that's installed because Lindenwood's going to have that opportunity, because they're going to fill the channel with other educational things as well. But I think those things would be determined. That's where this is not, everything's not figured out yet. It's just, they're starting their new radio and TV programming there in the fall, in August, and I think it's a great opportunity to get on the ground level.
One other question, if I may. What is the, how long does a motion to quote good for?
Thirty days, I believe, is the limit.
Okay. So are we looking for a motion to send this to the council then? If I may, could I make that motion now?
You sure can. So we have a motion to purchase sixteen thousand, six thirty-seven from Modern Communication by a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Musgrove. Any other discussion?
Just to come.
Okay, go ahead.
A question regards to the equipment itself. I'm sure there's going to be some equipment at Lindenwood, but the majority of the equipment that we purchased is going to stay on-site here at Bellville, not to be taken off-site without permission and insured.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
My guess is, if it's like most university programs, to see that as that gets bigger and they get going, I would almost guarantee there are going to be some additional equipment or re-functioning and maybe more digital and so forth. So this is probably just the groundwork, but as they get bigger, which maybe we'll be able to do some of the things the moderating and the things. So I think we're probably at the ground level, but I would almost bet we're going to, we're going to see this equipment change in five to seven years.
They haven't asked for it yet. I'm not so sure, Mayor, that we won't have some kind of an agreement to fill out with Lindenwood. We just haven't quite crossed that threshold.
And they can spell out any shared responsibility.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just to come, Mr. Chairman, just to remind everybody, as Jamie said, on the sixteen some odd thousand that we're approving here, it's totally understood that we should be getting six thousand dollars back.
I'm sure it'd be a ten thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollar expense for the city out of general time.
Right, okay. Okay, Alderman Haden.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Silsby, goes, aye. Alderman Tybert.
Aye.
Alderman Gilley.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Mayor.
I vote aye.
Okay, motion passes. This will go on to council in the evening.
Thank you.
Okay, the final order of business is to discuss the sales tax extension and with the possible decision to move it on to council with the recommendation. So I'll open it for discussion after hearing the comments. And we had a chance to think about it. We talked about it in a couple of meetings. So we get an opportunity-- Um, Gilley?
Can, is there any way, I don't know, pursuant to law, is this the smallest increase or decrease you can have? Is it a quarter or a couple percent?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would seem that we've heard a great deal of comments against the continuation or to make the quarter percent sales tax permanent from people in the, in public participation. On the other hand, we've heard a lot of discussion about the need to retain the quarter percent sales tax and the revenue that it generates for the city. And it also would seem that we're trying to tie the COPS grant and the continuation of the quarter percent sales tax to hiring four more police officers. I think it would also make sense that there is revenue available through possibly some other streams, such as the gaming tax revenue, that we really don't know what might be coming our way. But I think that it makes sense that we see some type of continuation, but I would not want to see that continuation be permanent at this stage of the game. I'm not so sure that four-year extension with a sunset at that point would make sense either when we're probably within, what, six months of getting a better foothold on what kind of gaming revenue the city might be looking at.
I would hope, Alderman Randall, that we have a better picture by our budget time, but I don't know if that's clear. The state is moving very slow on installations. And it may be till next year this time until they all get installed is what, that's just one of the comments that's gotten back to me. And then it may take a little bit of time until you let, you know, I'm sure at first there's going to be some spikes of interest, but until it kind of levels off and see where it's at. So we've had conversations, and I don't know that we're going to have a clear picture for at least a twelve-month period or maybe a little bit more. And because they've started a lot slower, I thought they would have a lot more installed by now, but they just haven't. And that's just because the number of people who are qualified and approved to do it, I guess they just want to use some of that time.
I think that there's been some very relative points made, and those by Alderman Hayden as well. Obviously, Mayor, you also stated, okay, the state's financial picture, not the best thing in the world, the slow repayments to municipalities, et cetera. The possibility that our legislature is going to take a temporary income tax increase and make that permanent, which is going to impact residents of our state as well, of our city as well. We also have some increases that our residents are going to be looking at with respect to sewer rates and possibly income from rental property if that comes into effect as well. I would be hesitant to support any permanency in terms of this quarter percent sales tax. Would be hesitant to consider a four-year sunset. I might be willing to consider a two-year sunset, providing that we were to commit five hundred thousand dollars a year to go along with this COPS grant to hire, say, three to four additional police officers so that we can try to start plugging some holes into the gaps that we have in servicing our community in a better fashion. I don't know how other members of the committee might feel, but I think that it would be prudent as well to let the public perhaps decide this issue at general election. I guess what the earliest citywide election might be, what, April 2015?
That'd be the next citywide.
So if we were to, say, take a two-year sunset provision to extend this through December 31st, 2015, if it goes on the ballot then April of 2015, and the voters approve it, then it becomes a moot point at that juncture. Okay? So it can be then going into effect, what, at the beginning of the year of 2016 then?
Permanent.
Permanent, if the voters decide on that. If the voters decide against it, then the city is still in a position at that time to, you know, take another look at it and say, do we want to extend this further?
Mr. Chairman? I think I would caution the council that if we're going to, and we applied to the COPS grant, but so far, number one, we haven't received it. And number two, once we're offered it, we have the right to tell them then if we're going to accept it or not. I would think that if we're going, I have, excuse me, we certainly have good support. We've got letters back from Senator Durbin, Congressman Enyard, that they are in full support. They have, they have been making calls and letters, et cetera, and reminding them that Bellville has had one in the past. We executed it superbly. That they also helped in our explanation, explained why they believe Bellville being economy seat and all the things that go on here, that additional police would be well served of our whole county. I really believe, if we're going to accept the COPS grant, though, in fairness to officers that we're going to be recruiting to fill that, I think at a minimum, a four-year, a four-year time before sunset would be really fair to the police officers who may be picking up and moving here when they get hired and knowing that at least, because if we don't, if something happens and the council makeup changes and we don't get this timely, we could have to pay back that whole grant. There's penalties, strict penalties, if we don't fund it for that four years, right, Jamie? So, you know, we could, we could be on the hook for the five hundred thousand. So I think the four-year sunset would be a minimal consideration. But remember, even if you pass it, even if the council passes it, I'd be the first one to tell you, at some point, that if we get to the point where we're really starting to turn things around for whatever reasons, gaming or whatever it is, there's nothing stopping us from going back and repealing that tax. You know, I know people are going to say, well, you're not going to do that. But we don't know what the gaming's going to do. I think it's going to take a year, eighteen months to see what the playing field, the average is there. And like I said, it may not do near what some of the people think it's going to do. But time will tell then. But I think if we're going to, if we don't get the COPS grant, I think we still have the ability to hire several police officers if we extend this tax.
Well, and I guess that was my point, okay? Even at the COPS grant, if we committed five hundred thousand dollars hiring more officers, we'd still be able to put them on the street.
I agree.
And I've talked to a businessman from the south, from the west side, and I talked Roger Reethie four times since Friday. He has no problem with his phone calls and all the people that he's talked to from the west side don't have problems with the sales taxes. What they would like, though, is the COPS. If we generate, they want this money, some of this money to earmark for police protection. That's what they're, that's the concession that they're asking for. It's like Jerry Borger said tonight, they have, most of the businesses downtown don't have it. They don't share the run into anybody that had the problem with it. If it goes to the police. So it's a good point. If we earmark part of it, five hundred thousand.
I think the mayor's going to say that we're not allowing earmarking.
Well, I think we're committed to hire police with this, with this, by keeping this quarter percent sales tax. And I think, Garrett, what's the easiest way we can do that legally?
Can we write it in the block, Garrett?
Well, you can't, you can't include that in the ordinance, but that could be the consensus of the council.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think we all have to stand up to our constituents. We, I think it's very clear here, we want to keep this at a minimum of four years so that we can hire four more cops. I'm sorry, Garrett, I'm--
Your ordinance just contains the quarter income. It has to be in quarter percent increments. It goes with your general budget and you determine on standard budget.
So I would like to comment, and I don't think anybody's brought this up tonight, that with this quarter percent sales tax, we get more bang for our citizens' buck. Because I would venture to say, out of the 1.2 million, probably one-third of that comes from people outside our community. And especially if you look at the way Bellville is laid out. It's very alone, and we draw people from other communities quite readily. And if you look at our biggest centers, Greenmount and out near Target and Eckerdson, you drew a 10-mile radius around them, you'd see that the great majority of people, well, not the great majority, quite a few people could come from outside of Bellville. So our Bellville citizens are getting more bang for their buck because they're getting not only what they put in, but what other shoppers put in. And I don't think a whole lot of people are going to change their pattern of shopping over a quarter for every hundred dollars because they spend more than that on gas.
And the facts, as Jamie spelled out here, the facts have proven that in the last two years we've had this tax, sales have gone up. Sales have gone up. And so it's not shown to be what people are running elsewhere because of the quarter percent sales tax.
So you're saying the sales have not been hurt, but--
And you're--
No, sales subject to the sales tax, that Home Rule sales tax of a quarter percent. Those sales subject to that in this 16-month period that we've collected this tax have been up one percent from the same 16-month period prior. So, and sales not subject to that, or total sales, I should say, are up more than four percent. So sales are still increasing even though this tax has been implemented. It's not just that revenue's increasing, the sales that is based off of it is increasing.
One point that I'd like to make, but Alderman, these questions that you put out were very good. And they were important for somebody that's new to the industry. You've got some good history. Your answers are good. So I appreciate both, okay, the question and the response.
You know, one of the concerns I have, and you can never know, and that is with the state of Illinois, you know, as Alderman Hayden mentioned, they want to make the tax permanent. But, you know, are they going to continue to provide money payment to the cities? You know, they're doing that now, but history proves that they may not. And then all of a sudden, we don't have that and we're back into a financial crisis again. But I also agree that I wouldn't, I think, I wouldn't want to make this permanent because I think there are other opportunities to come. If we get the opportunity to see what's going to happen with the gaming and we, give us an idea of what's going on. And that may take a couple of years, you know, to see exactly what's going to happen with that. So I would--
So are you saying that we should not count on the state?
I'm not going to be quoted.
I mean, we all know that.
Past history--
You're right. It's a good point.
You know, that's-- They're having enough problems trying to do the pinchers up now. You know what they did there? They diverted it because they needed it somewhere else. Well, they're going to do the same thing to what happened with the city. They're going to need it somewhere else, so they're going to take it away from the city.
And they talked about taking our replacement tax. Now, they've only taken a smidgen, but they talked about taking seventy-eight thousand dollars from when there was the memo we got from the IML that it was happening. Well, when we, we wrote this resolution at the time and sent it and recalled and the Southwestern Council of Mayors, which I apparently have the vice president, we all lobbied hard, all the mayors, and said, quit taking, quit being creative and taking away revenue from all these different pots. So they all pretty well got the message and the replacement thing, tax issue died. Now, will that resurface?
It could. Can you explain to those who may not know the replacement tax, Mayor? Our name is-- Because we start going out of taxes, a lot of people--
Because we start going out of taxes, a lot of people can't figure which ones are.
Okay, replacement tax is essentially a form of business income tax in the state of Illinois. Many years prior to me, they decided to divert that away from the cities and decided, well, instead of giving the replacement tax, we'll give the personal property replacement tax kind of in a different format. What the mayor was talking about is, a few years ago, they decided that they, they didn't want to fund the superintendents' schools anymore, so now we'll take replacement tax from cities who fund superintendent salaries and benefits and pensions and everything else.
And I will tell you that this is where the municipally, which I haven't heard yet, but I was nominated to go on their board, and where like groups like the Southwestern Council of Mayors has lobbied very hard to speak up for cities and saying, those of us who have to provide basic services to citizens, police and fire and local streets and all these things that we provide, don't take any more of our funding sources. So there's been a good lobbying effort by all of us working together, and that's why I've joined and become very involved on behalf of the city with those organizations, because we have to all stick together, and it's been effective. When a number of us mayors have gone to Springfield to speak up, it makes a lot of difference when a group of you go on a bus opposed to one person making a phone call. And all of a sudden, they start to say, oh, man, a number of my constituents, my mayors, are here. Especially when you get a couple of the mayors that are like Belleville and Grand City and some of the cities home, Edwardsville, who have a little bit bigger population in southern Illinois, all of a sudden, some of those reps and state senators, their eyes are opening up and they're very much more attentive. So I think we've got to continue to raise those voices, we've got to continue to pass those types of resolutions. And one of Oliver Hay's questions, when, when was the last time? And I had just talked to State Representative Hartman Thursday morning before I even saw your email, that very day. So it's just, you know, we've got to keep that fight up. I would suggest, folks, that, you know, listening to the public, not making it permanent, but I think the other reason to go four years is, I think we are on the verge of having to have some very serious discussion and educate ourselves even more about what happens when TIF III goes away. And I think that's in, that's in 2021, which is not that far away. And if you go out four years, the length of this cops grant, so that we in good faith can say we're covered to not have to pay back the grant in case something goes awry, and we also don't have to hire young officers and make them feel right away that it might after two years not be funded. I think we're going to have to continue to have some very serious dialogue about what happens when TIF III goes away, because there's a lot of misconceptions about TIF. People just do not understand. When TIF III goes away, our schools right now, 201 and 118, get $2.5 million a year from us, because we've always treated our schools extremely fair. When they lose that $2.5 million, I can tell you, it's going to affect them. I can tell you, when we don't have that $100,000 to $200,000 a year to buy police cars or a new fire truck, it's going to affect us and other things that's in there. Because, huh? Sewer, we're right now, we talk about sewer rates, and Dean had a good point in our meeting last, two weeks or two ago, when we factor this now, we should probably not even count, but we've been giving between $1.5 to $2 million a year out of TIF to help keep those sewer rates down up till now, trying to help, you know, not overburden the taxpayers. Now, on the 14th of August, you're all going to be invited here to another public hearing, and the EPA director or one of the directors is going to be here along with other staff members, and they're going to personally explain why we have to do what we're doing, that we're not making this up. This isn't a choice, this is a mandate. And so they're coming, they were here once before, a few years ago, they're coming again at their request to come.
No, a mandate would be in noncompliance law.
If we're not complying with law, our federal money and state money will stop. CDBG funds, all forms of grants, all forms of payment, they will end up, what's the word I'm looking for, Garrett? They'll sanction us, they'll, there'll be, there'll be a, yeah, but it's, it'll be a consent decree, and they'll be, they'll stop us. They'll stop us from getting, and we will be in a world of hurt if you don't follow. So that meeting's a very important meeting.
What time is that?
It's going to be on the 14th at 6:00 PM in this chamber, so you'll be getting that, don't you? We just set that up, Royce just set that up with the EPA, Garrett, just a couple days ago. So...
How much is the salary pulling up there?
We don't know yet, they're analyzing it.
Estimate?
We're still, we're still crunching numbers.
We're still crunching numbers, we really, there's a couple factors where...
At a meeting tonight, yesterday morning.
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of factors we're crunching. We're right now, we're, we're trying to get the rates up where we treat St. Clair Township. There's a host of things that are going to factor, but they're going up, and we'll have more details by that meeting.
They're going up, and they're, and this is going up?
This isn't going up now, Paul, this is staying the same.
I understand that.
Okay, that's the one misconception, we're not raising the tax, we're just keeping that quarter percent tax in place. Okay?
I'm assuming after this is in place, but for...
I would, I would, Dean, I'd have to say, Garrett, the first of the year, we probably would have been somewhere, the preseason started, roughly?
We need to raise them as soon as possible, based on, based on information provided to me from Royce and from 2011 to the, that we have to...
We may have to tie it into the next fiscal year, eh?
What's that?
We may have to tie it into the, starting at the next fiscal...
You're going to see incremental raises from all time.
Right, right, but I mean, the initial will be managed right into the next fiscal year. But you're right, the stated figure tonight would be premature.
It is, and I, and I don't want to, I don't want to do that, because it's not, we want to be as educated as we can.
It's going to be contingent upon a part of the ultimate timeline.
Right, right.
I'm going to have a presentation put together for that meeting that will put this out, black and white, it'll be interactive, we can see if we change this, what's going to do to our surplus shortfall numbers, and then if we change range, or in this particular range, or this range, or another range, you know, what the rate, what this rate will do, what that rate will do, you know, the fact that we're having to, we have to wean ourselves off of TIF III subsidies essentially is what it boils down to.
This will be on the 14th.
It's on the 14th, and I'll, I'll have all that prepared, 2011 is the word, actually, I think it's already been turned over, you know, how the presentation should look like. So those in the audience, and you as the council, will definitely be educated, probably more than you want to, with regards to how, what's determined are our rates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to hear out of word by any means, but I would like to hear from Mr. Goletti and Mr. Musgrove, what their thoughts are about the quarter percent sales tax.
My hand was just up, and I was going to ask if we could vote on this. Tom gets it down tonight, I think it's time to vote.
Oh, I'm for it, and I, but I think it should go to four years.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the quarter percent sales tax be extended for a two-year period, sun setting on December 31st, 2015.
One second. I have one second. So the motion, yes. Okay.
I'm going to make a similar motion, I'm sorry, Ken, but I would vote that it, that we put it to a vote, that it remains in place, that we put it, that as soon as possible, as soon as the next available opportunity, that it be placed on a ballot for everybody in Belleville to vote, and that the sunset provision be after that vote, whenever it is.
Do I have a second? Excuse me, can I clarify the motion made by Mr. Goletti? Is, are you saying, Mr. Goletti, that you want to extend the quarter percent sales tax with a two-year sunset provision to expire December 31st, 2015, with the understanding that the quarter percent sales tax then be placed on the earliest citywide election ballot, which would be April 2015?
November, Mr. Chairman, November 14th of the next general election, there will be people voting.
Right, that's, that's right.
But understand, Jamie, tell me if I'm wrong here, with that timing, it would truly sunset, we'd have, we'd have to plan the budget.
Right, well, okay, if, let me wrap my head around this, you want it to be extended through December 31st, 2015, no matter what the outcome of that, that referendum. So if they would say, do away with it, we don't want to extend it, it would still be through December 31st, 15?
Yes, that, yeah, that would be acceptable.
But if they approve it...
Right.
We won't, we won't be in a position to continue immediately, because they won't have the...
Well, if the election is November 14th, you have...
They have to be notified by October to continue.
Yeah, it'll still be in place through the, through the next December.
Is that right, Garrett?
13 months after the election.
They're talking about an election of 14.
Okay, it's a tax, tax of 15. Okay, okay, we're okay. I was thinking, I was thinking in my mind initially that we couldn't put on a ballot until the spring of 15, but we can actually, I think.
We, we, both of you recall, Mr. Chairman, the mayor, we put the gaming on the November ballot for two reasons. One, it was a sooner ballot, and also there was going to be a greater turnout of the polls of the citizens who passed.
So to answer your question, and that, Ken, yes, that's, that's the clarification.
Garrett, do you have that? I understand.
As to what the motion was? My understanding, it was a motion to, to extend to a December 31st, 2015 sunset, and conduct an advisory referendum in the interim on November...
2014. Next year.
November 14th.
2014.
That's correct, that's the motion.
Is it a, is it a refer, an advisory referendum or a binding referendum? You can still give the council the opportunity, if things change drastically from the state, that we have the ultimate say to make the final motion?
Sure, if the, the city wants to vote it down by citizens, then sure, I'll, I'll put the city council on the spot then.
Well, I'm just asking, because that was one of the things that came up with the, with the, with the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second to extend the wheel tax?
Sales tax.
Sales tax to December 31st of 2015, and a referendum be in November?
2014.
2014.
And is it advisory?
Advisory.
Advisory referendum?
Advisory referendum. Okay, Randall?
I wanted to ask that, I want to ask that, Mr. Chairman, the mayor has a concern, and I certainly see the relevance to the concern, the potentiality of the four years as it relates to the cops grant, but if we, if we earmark money out of these two years, if we extend this for two years, knowing that we're going to take it to the people to get their final vote, we would have the ability to, to budget out of those next two years enough money to cover our four years of grant and, and show that we are approving commitment, is that correct? If this body chooses to do so?
Yeah, during the budget process and then...
You would have the ability to do that within the next two years, to prove that we are, are committed to the four-year grant. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
I think knowing ahead of time, we can do that, understand, we still have negotiating contracts, fuel, again, spike, you know, whatever, there's a few uncertainties at this time, but I think we can budget for that.
Right, and isn't this all related to the, the idea that the state is going to do what they're supposed to do? I mean, what, what do you want to vote there? That we believe that the state is going to keep up their benefits? Do you, I mean, that's what we're going to vote on.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said about the advisory, because the state, if the state gets back to this 1.7 million that they owe us, we're, we're back in a whole different ballgame again.
And they will, because there's going to be an election in November of next year, there's going to be a new governor in there, who knows what's going, what they're going to do? We can't depend on, on the idea that the state is going to keep up their benefits, that, that when they're trying to knock the feet out of the...
Mr. Chairman, that may, that's, that's another reason, for those that are pro for this tax, that's another reason that two years possibly makes sense, because four years, you know, we may have to do something different in two years. Apart now.
I'd still take two years as a gamble, we're going to lose half a million dollars.
How?
Well, we don't, we don't keep them for four years, all four of them.
If, if we get a bad, if a financial crunch would happen and we couldn't live up to the grant, then that could be one of the factors. But if the bottom fell, the state, and you got back in that, and then, you know, that is a possibility. Just, I mean, it's just the facts, I just don't want you to, I don't want anybody to come back to and say, well, the mayor, you didn't make it clear that if we don't keep those officers, every one of them, for, for four years, that you didn't tell us we had to pay the grant.
Right, and, but if we budget within the two years with the money, mayor, which would you say we can do, we also know if we're running into problems within the next two years, that we can always extend it another two years as that option. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to listen to the people and, and everybody, to, to get the best compromise of what I think is fair to people.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Oliver Hay, but understand, we had, I counted tonight, we had 10 people who voted opposition, our Republican boister opposition, and we had three that voted their support. That's a pretty small mix of 44,478 people. So, I mean, it's not exactly a true...
I understand, I understand.
Okay, we have a motion.
Can I, can I just say something? I think the mayor said this before, but I just want to reiterate, we're, we're kind of stuck on this sunset clause. No matter what you make of the sunset clause, one year, two year, four years, it doesn't guarantee it's going to go away, that doesn't guarantee we're going to keep it. You could say, we're just passing a no sunset clause, and in six months, you could say, you know what, the next time the date comes up to decrease sales tax, we're doing it. If, you can change this twice a year, no matter what this ordinance says, if the council approves changing it, they can change it. I just want to make that clear, because we're kind of...
Either way.
Right, exactly, we're kind of getting stuck on this sunset clause. And it, not that it doesn't mean anything, but it doesn't mean a whole lot, because the council...
I think it means a great deal to the public, though.
It does, if we got to keep, oh, sorry.
Oh, Randall? Any, any other comments?
I'm done, thank you.
We have to keep the faith of the trusted citizens. I mean, when this first came, they said, oh, it'll never go away. Well, they're proving us right. We should have, we have to, I'm sorry, it just should not keep on going for another two, four years. If we're going to have to do anything, two years. But we need to keep the faith of the people up. We told them this was going to be gone, and here we are, talking about extending, and that was the idea of the sunset clause, which you're saying we're getting stuck on the sunset clause. But that's what the people wanted, they wanted it to go away.
We did not say that they would go away, we said we would look at it to see whether or not.
Well, that was their perception, that's what they were thinking.
You know, listening to all this, I really don't think that people did about this doing quarter percent. I mean, of all of the people that called me, not one person called and said, would you vote against this? This is already, I mean, 25 cents of $100, I don't think the people really, really care, or are even careful about this, to be honest.
Okay, let's vote. Randall?
Yeah, aye.
Davidson? So, we vote no. Cybert?
Aye.
Galenny?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Mayor?
I'll vote aye to, to do it this way, I just think we're, you know, like I said, the fact that you put in there, if you would have put a binding or a referendum, I'd have had to say no. But I, I'll, I'll say, I'll say aye.
So, we'll make a recommendation to the city council, that a recommendation is to extend it for two years with a referendum being in November. That is the recommendation? Any other ideas? Yes.
Well, I, you're gone.
No. With the recommendation that goes to the council is that it would be extended for two years, and then put it on the ballot.
Through twenty, December twenty fifteen, with the referendum.
Will be in November.
And it's a non, non.
Twenty fifteen, that's two-year.
Correct.
The, the tax will be in place for another two years, the referendum is proposed for the, the general election, November two thousand fourteen. That would be when it would be placed on the ballot.
Any other items to come before the committee? If not, I'll indicate a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Let me second that. Randall, all those in favor say aye, proposed, thank you very much.
Dean?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't have charter, you won't be able to watch.
Did anybody do, did anybody do a survey to see how many people have chartered? And I myself am not aware of whether they were, did or did not.
And I understand, when I thought, Alan, the only thing you wouldn't make is a live broadcast, it should be posted. I understand it's going to be posted on the website as well, if you have internet access, you can access it as well.
After streaming, right?
It would be streamed, and I, my, my understanding was that you, that something could be posted. So, even after that.
You don't even, you don't even need charter.
But you got to wait until after.
They stream it.
They stream it.
They stream it, you could get it.
Well, you see, I don't have.
You have internet connection, right?
Yeah.
You have a dial-up, it'll run pretty slow.